Okay, so I'll follow you to order.
Well, thank you.
I did that for you too.
Well, we always hear you, the apple. So it's nothing new.
I'm gonna call the Samborn Regional School Board meeting to order.
Okay.
December 4, 2019. Please, ladies and gentlemen, we have a pledge of allegiance.
I just wanted to take a moment to introduce our two students. Recently, we had a fire that tore through the Flanagan McGibben family home last month. And the students of Samborn Regional Middle School were eager to show their support for the classmates and their solidarity as a community. The middle school student council held a bake sale on November 12th and on November 21st during parent teacher conferences. And student council president Sarah Barakis and vice president Mary Kate Varney presented Penny Flanagan with $400 that was raised at the bake sale. So they're here tonight to say our pledge and we can't thank you enough. Thank you so much.
Okay, you want to... You don't understand, or the flag is right here?
One nation, under our...
Okay, thank you, ladies. How about action on the minutes? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the manifest is working... Oh, there's a back?
Yep.
Everybody sign it?
Yep.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a non-public and rather than do it halfway through the meeting where you'd have to leave and come back, we're gonna do it now so that the whole meeting will go through. What we're gonna discuss in the non-public, we will be discussing here later on. But I didn't want to break this meeting in the middle, have you go up in the hallway for who knows how long and then come back in if you want to finish. So can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into non-public session per RSA 91-A:3-Roman numeral 2.
Second?
Second.
Voice discussion? No, voice vote?
Yes.
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 Yes, okay, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we seal the previous minutes from the non-public session for perpetuity or until situation is resolved.
Your health raises over.
We're all in a good mood tonight, though. I remember when we were fighting with each other. Okay, do I have a second?
It works.
Don't mind us, we're just a happy campus.
Yes.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Yes. Jamie? Say yes. Yes.
Yes, yes, unanimous.
Okay, now we can get to the Orlando field trip.
All right. So hello, my name is Erin Smith Davis.
And I'm Matthew Brad.
Um, we are the music teacher... He's the band director, I am the choral director at the middle and high school. Um, and we have been working on a wonderful opportunity for our students for next winter, next February, to bring them to Orlando, Florida for four days. Um, we think it's gonna be a great trip. We've been working with Terry Jo Fox from Bob Rogers Travel, who planned our New York trip last year as well, who was a wonderful travel agent and was great company to work with. We're excited to work with them again on this trip. I hope you've all received a copy of the itinerary. Um, we would fly out of Manchester Airport on Sunday. This is the Sunday before our February break, so the students would not be missing any class time. And we would return late on Wednesday, February 24, 2021. Um, I'll let you take a look at the itinerary, but we're really excited that there are two performance opportunities for both the band and chorus each. Um, one of the opportunities would be in a public forum where we would play on Main Street in, what is it called? Disney Springs is what it's called now. And the other opportunity would be for us to learn a piece, be coached by a Disney professional, make a recording of that piece, and then they would put our music behind whatever Disney film it was from. So it would be a really fun experience.
Does the district get royalties?
I think Mouse is gonna get the royalties. But I actually did this trip when I was in high school and it hasn't changed in, I'm not gonna say how many decades. It's a wonderful experience, the opportunity to, first of all, that one, the one performance there where we get to work with the clinician and play to... It's basically like we are the recording symphony for the movie. Um, so there's a conductor that shows us, you know, what we're gonna be playing. They record us and then they play it back for us where we hear our music with the actual video footage from the movies.
This is February of 2021.
2021.
And on the back page, you might be interested to see the proposed payment schedule. The reason that we're here tonight, over a year in advance, is because we do want to plan for plenty of time for fundraising and it also allows multiple payments that are reasonable amount for families to afford, so.
How much do you have to raise? Do you have a number?
Um, it's hard to tell at this point because we won't have the airfare until about six months before. But the cost... I think I submitted that in the document as well. I don't know, didn't make it up. Um, I think it can be as low as 1,300 and then estimated 1,700 on the higher side.
Per person?
Correct.
How many students would be going?
We're hoping, what, upwards of probably close to 70. But it depends on what our numbers look like for next year. But with this happening, it's a big draw for students to continue with the program or to come up from the middle school and join the high school program. And that's one of the reasons why we do field trips like this is that it's a great opportunity to bring more students into the program.
Probably won't have too much trouble getting chaperones either.
You've really got your work cut out for you. That's quite a sum of money.
It is.
Talk about getting frequent flyer miles. Stick with one airline or even talk to like Southwest and see what they would do for the school district to send the kids. Just an idea, because they're usually very accommodating in many instances.
Another thing, another thing I might look at is, have you ever... For some reason, Samborn, when I taught here, didn't do it. Things called corporate sponsors. When I did my student teaching for special ed, I was in Cambridge and there are corporations that would subsidize or give us to go to different museums and what have you. So they take them as tax write-offs. So major corporations like Coca-Cola, Nike, what have you, have plans where they will actually donate money for programs and they're called corporate sponsors. So you could call Coca-Cola and say, you know, do you have a corporate sponsorship? They may say, you know, we'll fund a couple hundred dollars, 500, whatever. For some reason, out here in the hinterland, they didn't seem to use them that often. But in the inner cities or the cities, I happened to do my sped in Cambridge. We went to a lot of places for corporate sponsors. They'll buy X number of tickets to Museum of Science and give them to the schools. They may, they may have, well, you know, we can give you our corporate cost on Southwest, you know, or something. A few phone calls, it's either gonna work or it isn't, but it might be an option.
Well, we do have our music boosters, which is a 501(c)(3) organization. So that's something that, that might actually be... I mean, they're undoubtedly going to kick in a little bit for us.
I was very surprised they didn't have it, you know, it's not, didn't seem to even be known about up here. So anyway, just an option for you. Uh, Disney might have lists of corporations you can request funds from as well, especially with the 501(c)(3). Jamie?
Um, yeah, can I make the motion to approve? Is that...
It's fine, yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to move to approve the field request.
Yep.
Further discussion?
Yes, I mean, I have, yes.
Oh, okay, yeah, you're going by the rules. How'd that happen?
Um, I just wanted to add that when my son was here, he was in the band and the chorus and I was fortunate enough to be able to chaperone a couple trips with Mr. Brad. And it was, it was a wonderful experience. We went to New York City and then we went to Boston. Every other year, they were doing the trips back then and it was a great experience. Mr. Brad is a wonderful leader. He was great with the kids, so I'm all for this.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote unanimous?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, you do have...
Yep.
You do have resignation.
Yes, I do.
Okay, resignations.
I would ask that the board accept the resignation of middle school teacher Tamzin Walker.
So moved.
Second, someone?
Second.
Discussion? Um, just my curiosity, is leaving at the end of the year or no?
No, Tamzin accepted another position.
Oh, so we're not gonna add with...
You'll take care of whatever has to be done to replace her. Okay. You don't have a problem with that, so?
No, I'm fine.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, and now the long-awaited budget.
Great, so Mr. Angel has some information for all of you. Think that, oh wait, actually, we're not. This is just my superintendent's report, sorry. We're jumping ahead here a little bit. The budget is actually under old business.
No, I thought it says budget.
Yeah, yeah, I have a note. I just, I wanted to let everyone know that, um, basically, we're discussing the budget this evening. So with the vacation Thanksgiving break and everything, there isn't a lot to report on my end from the school side because we frankly just been working on the budget. So I kind of was just gonna forego any, my usual lengthy, long superintendent's report. There really isn't a whole lot extra to report today.
Okay, so I'm gonna go right into committees.
Perfect.
Okay. Policy, I believe you had something?
So we met on November 6th to prepare the first read you'll see tonight. And we met tonight as well to review additional policies, which we'll forward to you soon for first read. The administration has asked us to review policies in section K, which concerns school community relations and we'll be getting that shortly. Everyone's invited to attend our meetings and our next meeting is January 8th at 4:45 in room 102. Also, I am the designated delegate to the School Board Association Assembly in January. So I hate all regulations and I vote no on everything, but I do need to represent the board. So I'll need your feedback on the proposed continuing resolutions. And I'll, and Phyllis will forward those to you and then we'll be discussing those hopefully at our next meeting.
Yes, we would have to do that at the next meeting. Yep.
Isa?
Excuse me, one quick question, Pam. Is that different than the listing that was put out by the New Hampshire School Board Association? Because they had several resolutions that they submitted. That's basically the same thing?
They have continuing resolutions, new resolutions, and then their statement of, their mission statement, which has continuing resolutions, which can be altered.
Okay.
Anything can be discussed and amended.
Okay, so, but...
That's what, that document that sent her out, right?
I did send it.
Yes.
I got that all marked up. Want me to send it to you, the markups?
I'll send it again.
Or do we wait for the meeting?
It's, what we need to do is, um, the board discusses any... There's a board vote on anything that we're going, we're gonna recommend how Pam votes.
Yep.
And we'll discuss each resolution and potential change or suggestion.
I should keep my notes for that discussion.
Okay.
The operative word there was recommend because anybody can make changes. So we kind of trust Pam. We're gonna say, we recommend you do this, but then all of a sudden, somebody comes up, they make a motion, reverse what we recommended and we trust Pam to say...
Or someone might present...
You said vote, but I voted against because...
Someone may present an argument so convincing that it sways my opinion. I mean, that can also happen, hopefully not.
Right, but, but understand that these are resolutions that people talk about and we may say, take a right and all of a sudden, the resolution finds out that everybody's taking a left. We have to trust Pam to say, yeah, I go along with that or no, I don't.
I'll call you.
Yeah, right. I'll shut my phone off that day.
Just vote no, Pam.
Isa?
Yeah, the Excellence and Student Achievement Committee met on November 21st. In attendance were myself, Ms. Alessio, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Ambrose, and Dr. Haynes. Our committee goals were finalized and adopted. We have three. One, develop a plan to implement improved math instruction. Two, develop end-of-year benchmarks for each grade level, K through 6, in math. And three, with the intent of implementing a new grade reporting system by fall 2021, explore a new grade reporting system and determine what and how much information is important for inclusion. The target for completion of those goals is the end of the school year in June. Dr. Haynes outlined the status of the grade reporting system review. The current system, Wazle, is clunky and time-consuming for teachers and too convoluted for ease of use for parents. The district is working with Motivus and has had about 12 to 15 teachers, K through 12, piloting their program, working in both grading systems in parallel. The next step will be for a few teachers to do beta testing and provide direct feedback to Motivus, who will have developers respond with changes in real time and a group status discussion in early January. Motivus will also be working on the parent view, which is a separate side of the software from the teacher's view. One possibility for gathering feedback for that is to offer opportunities for review at school events where they may set up Chromebooks and have, invite parents to kind of work through the grading, the grade reporting and give feedback. Uh, we had some discussion of the AP program, possible ways to increase rigor. We didn't have an extensive discussion because Mr. Stack and...
Mr. Dawson.
Mr. Dawson, thank you. Were not able to attend the meeting, so we didn't want to go too far. But we just kind of kicked around some thoughts about how we, how we feel about the AP program. And, uh, Dr. Haynes was asked to provide some long-term history to aid us in evaluating the program from a historical perspective. We're gonna be discussing that more at our next meeting, which will be two weeks from today, December 19th at 4:45.
Okay, facilities? Uh, facilities met this afternoon and I'll report on that at the next school board meeting. The next facilities meeting is January 8th at 3:45 PM in room 102 at the high school. Public relations? There you go, finance.
Oops, sorry.
I'm sorry. Finance committee met on Wednesday, November 21st. The meeting began at 3:45 PM. All committee members were present, along with the business administrator, Matt Angel, and director of technology, Bob Ficker. We reviewed and approved the meeting minutes of Wednesday, September 18th. Thereafter, Matt Angel presented a request he received from the high school, for high school auditorium equipment upgrades. Bob Ficker explained to the committee the upgrades that were necessary in order to interface with current, more modern equipment, along with lighting, sound system, and other improvements that are being requested. The total cost of the upgrades presented is $142,600. Jim Baker asked for a breakdown of the equipment that is not working as desired and to narrow the list down from necessary to like to have. Jamie Fitzpatrick asked for information about the auditorium rental rate. The committee approved expending up to $17,000 to upgrade the video processing connections and control equipment to include HDMI cabling to the stage. The committee asked for a written upgrade plan that would prioritize the additional requested upgrades, provide current related cost estimates, as well as a plan to market the rental and usage of the auditorium. The committee also requested a review of the job responsibilities of the auditorium manager. We also reviewed the status of district technology equipment. Jamie Fitzpatrick asked Bob Ficker how he plans the district's needs for laptops, Chromebooks, iPads, et cetera. Bob explained that he uses our ship dates, which are the date of purchase, the date we get them of the laptops to determine how old they are. Bob also explained with some equipment, we do not buy brand-new technology, but rather purchase older refurbished technology up to six or seven years old. When the plan was initially put together for technology, Bob put in to upgrade a certain amount of equipment every five years, but explained the plan was never funded. At the elementary and middle schools, Chromebooks are never, have never been updated. Each year at the high school, freshmen receive new Chromebooks and they use them for four years. Bob replaces Chromebooks at the elementary and middle schools as they break. Uh, there was no public comment. The meeting was adjourned at 5:50 PM. Uh, the next finance committee meeting is scheduled for December 18th at 3:45 PM, room 102 at the high school. I'd like to make an amendment to the minutes. The minutes should reflect the fact that it was a split vote on the approval of the auditorium equipment. It was two to one. With Jim and LA voting aye and myself voting nay. Public relations?
Public relations has a meeting a week from today, December 11th at 4:30 in room 102.
Personnel?
Personnel's next meeting is December 11th at 5:00 PM in room 102. And we'll begin work reviewing and updating district job descriptions and everyone's welcome.
Pam, just a note, my trip to Europe was canceled, so I will be there.
To Germany?
Yeah.
I think it was, okay. Thanks.
Is that a good or a bad thing?
It's good.
Budget?
Sorry, budget committee will be meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, right here in the library.
Where is it gonna be held, I'm sorry?
Right here, in the library.
Right here, at 7:00 tomorrow night.
7:00 tomorrow night.
Very much. Student council has been excused and that brings us to public comment. That's public comment one, we will have another one. The superintendent will be discussing some of the budget issues, am I correct?
Yeah.
So if you have any budget questions, you might consider waiting for the second comment. I just wanna bring that up because I know budget is a hot topic right now. So first public comment. Okay, moving on. We've got the business, okay.
Did the overnight field trip?
We did that, now we're looking at the approval for the blue light warning system. Matthew?
Okay, so we have a reimbursement request that requires signatures from the school board. So I'm asking that the school board accept, well, approve this reimbursement request and sign it as it goes around, please.
So do you need a motion and a second and then a approval and then everyone signs it?
I think it would be cleaner if there's a motion, a second, and approval so that I can show in the minutes that there was, uh, this approval. But on the next page, it has a signature for, for the school board down below.
Last page?
Yes, last page.
All right, I'll put it right in.
You want a motion for $48,000 to expend?
No, we've, it's already been, we already have permission to spend the grant funds.
For the blue lights, right, yeah.
We've already accepted it. We've already spent the money. Now we're asking to, um, to get the money back. It's just this particular grant requires any reimbursement request to get the money back to be signed by the school board.
So we put the money out, so now we're asking them to reimburse us for the money we spent?
Correct.
So moved.
Second?
I'll sign that.
All, all in favor?
It's called a no-brainer.
All in favor?
Thank you. Jam, you good? He's signing, I'm assuming that's a no, but yes.
Oh my god.
We want the money.
Thank you.
I'm gonna leave that top space.
Can we get interest? It's been sitting there for how long? The government only charges interest, they don't give interest.
I wanna give them a call and ask if you can...
Actually, they do, they do give interest if you... Okay. We have a number of policies. I would assume people have read the policies and they're prepared. Do we wanna, you wanna, how do you wanna handle this, Pam? You all set? Or do you wanna just go for one?
So, this is just the first read. I wanted to know if people had any specific comments about the list of policies that we're considering. Our current policy, BCA, as you know, is a hodgepodge of professional ethics rules and regulations that address both employees and the board. But policies in the B section are just board ethics. So we had to pull apart our BCA code of ethics and find policies in the New Hampshire School Board Association's repository that kind of matched the intent of our current seven long, seven-page ethics policy. So we wanted to repeal the current one and replace it with a set of shorter policies that address staff ethics, responsibilities, confidential student information, staff conduct, use of the internet, political activities on, in the district. And so I did the best I could to find policies that reflected the intent of our current policy. But again, these, many of these are, they're not required, they're not required or priority. They are recommended policies. So if there's something you don't like, if there's something you wanna modify, that's fine. These are just suggestions for replacing our current with revised policies. And Jamie already gave me a list, which was really helpful. I appreciated that. Where you see policy in these, these samples in bold, those are changes that the policy subcommittee made to the, the School Board Association sample. So that's what that means. I just want to mention before we start, there are two documents that were approved in 2018 by the, um, New Hampshire State Board of Education. There is a code of conduct for professional educators, which I gave you tonight. And that basically outlines the duties and responsibilities of educators, that they should use their district time for the students. They shouldn't be used doing things for personal, you know, benefit and so forth. So many of the, the regulations we have in our current policy are identified in this new state code of conduct. If something isn't in one of these new policies, it might be in the code of conduct that was passed, just so you know. And there's another one, code of ethics, which is more of a procedural guideline for appropriate licensing and credentials and steps, lawful steps for investigations into credentialing if that should arise. So this code of ethics is more of a procedural guideline. It's not really a professional ethics guideline. So there's actually two of them, code of conduct, code of ethics. And those are just for your reference. And the policy committee thought these looked pretty good, but they just decided to forward them to the entire board. So would you like to forward me your comments and then we can list them at a next meeting during second read? Or would you like to make comments tonight?
I'd like to make a comment about number 13.
All right. That is...
Number 13.
GCA, professional staff positions.
This is, if you can move that down.
Oh, sure. You want GCA?
Yeah. I don't have the numbers.
I'll find it, move on. Hold on, I lost it. Of course, it's not gonna go to the page.
It's page eight. Page eight, yeah. Two more. At the bottom. Thank you. So this is talking about what the board can do regarding criticisms concerning the district or operations or staff. And I think this really needs to be two separate lines because board members certainly have the right to criticize or discuss with constituents district operations. We're elected officials. When people ask us about district operations, we need to be able to speak with them. Uh, as far as staff goes...
You're looking at...
13.
13.
13.
Oh, I see, okay.
As far as staff goes, I don't have a problem with that. It's not our job to evaluate staff. But also with regard, regard to the superintendent, superintendent is, we're the governing body. The superintendent is our employee. We, I mean, ideally, we would discuss with the superintendent any issues. But if the staff, or not a staff, if a, if a member of the public comes up to me with something that they're asking me about... that they're asking me about, I'm gonna respond to that person.
Alright.
And unnecessarily at board meeting, that's, that's subjective and potentially very limiting. I don't think we need that language in there.
Or add something about the chain of command, I mean, make sure.
Necessary to me may be unnecessary to you.
There, there is something above there about chain of command, but that's a whole different issue.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Can I chime in on this?
Sure.
So, the way this works, or should work, is that if someone comes to, to you, Larry, and says, uh, I have a problem with blah, 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 the, the, the sanding isn't happening outside the school in the evenings and the sidewalks are icy. You say thank you very much, and you say, have you talked to the person at the school regarding that? And refer them to the correct person to deal with it. Or you ask them to see me, or you call me. What the policy's trying to address is that what you shouldn't do is say, I'll deal with that. And then, we have a functioning board. You're not going, you wouldn't call Steve Riley and say, hey, Steve, it's Larry from the school board. I have a problem with, someone came to me and said that this was going on, can you do something about it? There are places where that's happened. Right? And so we need to kinda put it into context of our work and relationships, that we have a, a, a good working relationship. You know, that if there's a problem, that you can bring it to me, or you can send the person to me. And in some places, that's not always the case, where the person would be heard by the superintendent, which creates a problem. Right? So I'm not denying that that isn't some wacky wording. I, I don't necessarily love the wording, Jim, and I don't have a problem with that. I wanna get to the heart of what it's trying to address. Right? And, and I think that this is the conversation that we should have at the next meeting is email that to me and Pam. We'll do some homework, we'll try to get something figured out and bring it back to you. Anyone else who has thoughts about them, feel free, well, we were kinda thinking at the next meeting, we'd really kinda hash these out and go through that.
Yeah, because once this is enshrined as a policy, anybody could point to that and say, well, you didn't follow the policy.
Right.
I said, well, I'm talking to a voter.
Right.
You know, I'm, I'm gonna talk to voters. I don't care, you know, yeah.
I think, I, I think we've, I think we've, I think we've all had phone calls, I, I know I've had a number of them. People will give the complaint to me, right? And it's very difficult, and it's hard to explain to them that there's a chain of command. Have you talked to the principal yet? Have you, and then, but don't, and you, you can't say it this way, right? But don't call me until you've called the principal, then the superintendent, and then if you get no resolution, call me. But you've gotta, people have a hard time understanding that because we're the school board, we're in charge. No, we're not in charge. He's in charge. And it's a very difficult thing to even have, a lot of people get that concept. So I think what they're trying to say here is stay true to the, depending on what the complaint is, that they go to the right person at the, it's like in the military, you go to the lowest level that can solve the problem. If that low level doesn't solve it, you go to the next level, you know, your chain of command. So I agree with you, some parent gonna call me, I'm gonna talk to them.
And you're gonna hear what they have to say.
Absolutely, but I'm also probably gonna say, as much as they don't wanna hear it, you know, I'm sorry, but you need, have you talked to the principal? Yes, did you talk to superintendent? No, you really need to call him. Now, what I do, and I have, is I call Tom and say, by the way, I just got a call from so-and-so, they're gonna be calling you.
Right.
You know.
Yeah, I mean, Tom's the executive, but we're the governing body.
Right.
We have, not only do we have policies, but we have state regulations that determine our responsibilities.
Right, right.
Um, so that's, to me, could be interpreted as muzzling.
No, I, I agree, I think it needs to be worked on, okay? But I also have to realize that the practicality of the world is that we don't run the school.
Yeah, I think people know what they have to do, but in terms of number ten, which is understand the chain of command, but that doesn't mean that you don't talk to constituents, you don't hear them out.
I don't think anybody's saying that.
Yeah.
Tammy, it looks like you really wanna say something.
I don't, I read this a little bit differently because it says present personal criticisms. So the way, concerning district operations, staff, et cetera. So the way I read that is if I have an issue, it wouldn't be very professional, I suppose, of me to run around to, oh, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Hey, guess what?
People in the public and say, you know, I really can't stand the way.
Yeah.
But I agree with Jim, that would not be professional. But if someone, if someone comes to me and says, you know, I have this problem and I really, it just drives me crazy, I guess I feel like I wanna at least be able to say, you know, I, I hear you and I, that's driven me crazy.
You wanna say, let me see what I can do, is what you really, that's what you want to say.
Yes.
In a sense, you can't.
That, that impulse, and I guess I, I feel like we kind of have a, a knowledge of the chain of command at this point. But I, I read that a little bit differently, that I wanna be able, I don't wanna feel muzzled and be, and not be able to at least commiserate to some degree, say, yeah, I've had that problem before, I, I hear, you know, I hear you. That's how, that's how I interpreted that.
I think I've gone a situation where I said, I got a call from so-and-so, could you call her? I, it wasn't her, in this case, I think.
Well, there've been instances where I get the call and I say, you need to call the principal.
Yeah.
And there've been times where the principal said, you need to talk to the teacher, you haven't even done that yet. Where people go to the board member, but, but the, Tammy, you, you, you said it perfectly. This addresses presenting personal criticisms, so that it's, it, I, I'd like to talk to Will and ask him a little bit more about this and maybe look for some more comfortable language, because I don't think that the intent of it was, I can, I understand what you're saying. And, and I think that we need to be careful and we could probably rewrite this to fit our needs.
Or pull it out entirely.
Or pull it out entirely. Yeah, but it, but it is important to remember that, that in, in terms of boardsmanship, for myself included, like there are things that I have opinions about that I, I don't always, it would not work for me to just share them openly. You know, I don't like this, I don't like that, I don't like so, I mean, I know places where that occurs and it's not, it sets up a very negative culture. So it's one thing for Ellie to call me and say, I really didn't like X, Y, and Z that I saw at this thing. And we're talking about it and I'm taking it into advisement and thinking about it and how I could address it. But it's a different thing for Ellie to go to some P T O meeting and spout off about it as a board member, saying, I didn't like this, this, and this, and this, and this. That's not, that, that's what this is addressing, it's saying, don't do that. It's saying, if you got a problem, bring it to the superintendent and let him address it and, and work with him. But it's not saying that you can't listen to someone else's problem, right? It's not saying that.
All of that's covered in number ten.
I don't have a problem with that, I agree. Yeah, yeah, just trying to shed a little light on it that.
You know, I've said this a couple of times, remember how it was three, four years ago? You know, that would've fit perfectly back then. Today, I think we're in pretty good shape. Maybe we even just take it right up. Jamie?
Just, I, I forward these to, I think, Tom and Pam as a chair previously, but for the benefit of others. Number six, if you just scroll up. I don't think that's, I think we're instructed to not do that. Uh, seek opportunities to assist systemic, systematic communication channels with students, staff, and members of the community. I think we're supposed to be talking through Tom.
Yeah, and I did ask Will about that and what we agreed on was that we'd wait until after you all forward your comments over the next few days, I'll hit Will with all of them at once.
Yeah.
It was incongruent, I agree.
Yeah, the other one is number seven. I, I had a strong disagreement in number seven, because the way I'm reading what number seven is saying is, we're in a, a, a board meeting and the vote is, I don't know, five to two, and I'm one of the two. That I'm supposed to then pretend in the community that I did not oppose that particular policy and that I support the five vote, when I didn't support the five vote.
Right.
I wouldn't trash mouth and say, oh, S O B's, you know, the five, what a bunch of moron. You know, that's inappropriate, I agree with that. But I would say, this is what the board agreed to, I did not agree with it, hence my vote, here were the reasons for my vote. That's, that's something to happen on the two.
So that's, if you had to ask me, hey, Tom, what, what would a, what would a, uh, an appropriate example be of a situation for that line? See, what, what we're dealing with is that our board is functioning relatively well, right? The majority, we actually were functioning very well. And so there are boards where people would go out and say what you just said. So the exemplar is, yes, we had a vote and it was a five to seven vote, and I did not vote in favor of X, but I understand the perspective of my colleagues and we're moving forward with this, so we're gonna give it our best shot. Right? That's, that's what that's trying to say, is that, that it, it, I, I did not like the wording myself. So I actually, that was one of the ones that, I, I just think that your example was perfect. Right? That it's, you have a right to dissent. It's just like the Supreme Court, they have a right to dissent and write a dissent, right? You, you have a right as a board member to dissent or not agree and, and to be able to speak your mind, but, but once it's decided, the goal is that we work together to move forward whether we agree to disagree.
And that's what you mean to like a chairman, because the chair represents the board. So the board votes five to two to support a particular article, let's say. The chairman would have to support, take the board's position, if they're representing the board, he would, he or she would have to take the board's position. That's not to say that as an individual.
I don't agree with it, but I support it.
Exactly, but you, if you represent the board, you have to represent the majority.
I have to say what the board said.
Exactly.
Right.
See, under the parliamentary system, you're kinda talking about, you don't want the parliamentary system, where in the parliamentary system, they all argue inside, but once they make the decision, everybody falls in line. Even though they don't agree with it, all together. This is not the parliamentary system. If you don't agree, you have the right to say, I don't agree, I didn't vote for it, and these are the following reasons, I was outvoted.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, right here, it says, um, general principle of the district and its students' benefit when board decisions, which have been made following discussion. You may not agree that the students are benefiting.
Can I make a suggestion? It looks like we're gonna be discussing this at length at the next.
Send the thoughts.
It's a good dialogue.
It is, it's good.
Yeah, no, it's good to have it now, but I'm also.
You'll get a long night ahead of us.
It's important.
Yep. So if you send all the questions ahead of time, I'll get whatever research I can, and then we'll have the conversation at the next meeting.
Okay.
Which we kinda planned a night when there wasn't as long of an agenda for that conversation. Tonight's gonna be budget.
April.
Yeah.
Okay.
So just send me your comments and I will incorporate them into one long document. Um, and I'll show you where people wanna make changes, and then we'll do the second read, is that what you'd like to do?
Yeah, please send them to me as well, I'd like to read them, because I'll be the one.
I, I was just, I was just gonna say, maybe you two need to get together, because if he, if he calls Will and we'll give suggestions, that's gotta be communicated to you.
Sure.
So that when you make any changes, you'll have reasons why.
Yeah. And we'll know how much, how big of a mess we have once we get all the comments in.
It'll be fine, we'll come up with something we can all work with. I really want this one to be a collaborative process that we all feel really good about at the end.
Policies here.
Yeah.
Why change?
Well, I, I like the way you split them up, Pam, I think you did a very good job in that, because I think it clarified the individual issues. I had no problem replaying the two that you recommend and going through all the others, so I just wanna thank you for your efforts.
Professional ethics for employees and staff, so if the staff has any feedback, that would be awesome. This is being posted on the district page, so.
We don't have to go for the individual.
You might wanna be a little careful on that.
I'm not afraid.
No, it's not that I'm afraid, I'm thinking, yeah, okay. Okay, you, you.
Yeah, I think we should move on and we've got a lot to do tonight.
You need a motion for the first read or?
So I guess we moved for first read and we've done the first read, so.
I, I didn't think so either, but I didn't know how, she's the chairman of the committee, I didn't know how she wanted to.
Oh, you're letting me run this section, okay.
Well, it's, it's the policy, you're the chairman, yes, yes, I would.
Thank you for the first read and we will be in discommunication, thank you.
Thank you.
I thought you were.
It was very collaborative.
Ah, no matter which way I go.
The full moon coming, just telling you.
Okay, no, but I wanted, she's the chairman, I wanted to make sure it was done the way she wanted it done. Chairman of the committee, I mean.
Right.
Okay.
Y'all say, okay, so, um, for the budget, uh, the first thing that, that we need to talk about is the, uh, the deliberation of the operating budget. And then we'll talk about the default budget, because the default budget's a calculation, there isn't really a lot of deliberation necessarily, but certainly if you have any further discussion that you wanna have. So Matt has made, uh, a few changes to the budget, which I think that he gave to you per the feedback in the questions that we received. Hundreds and hundred, a hundred and some odd questions, many slides, Matt, you have that? Did you, did you, yes, that's this one with the little blue and the yellow.
I got it.
Yeah. Jamie, you can't leave, it's budget.
I know, but I'll be kind.
Alright, alright, wait a second.
I mean, you can't leave.
Yeah, oh yeah, right, right.
Okay, let's do it now before Jamie gets back. All in favor?
Yeah. You might as well take a two-minute recess and everyone, let everyone use the bathroom. Alright, two-minute recess, yes, you?
Yeah, sure, you can do that.
You got the technical, so I'm gonna turn this over to Matt, because Matt has some simple information for you regarding the operating budget that he made some adjustments based on the feedback to make sure that certain things had a dollar in the line and the librarian was moved to the right spot and all the things that came up in the questions, so I'll let Matt.
Just explained it.
Very good, okay.
Okay, so the items in blue, um, if you recall during our budget, um, presentation, we eliminated two positions. One of them was, was the librarian, and at that moment, I realized that we didn't make that clear with inside the budget. So I'm asking the school board to, um, in, when, in their budget, to move the amounts around. And the, and blue is those amounts. Um, the ones that are in yellow are the ones for, um, athletic services for elementary schools, so we can offer intermurals for the, the sixth graders. Okay? And it's just as simple as that.
Those are just line item movements from one to the other, correct?
Exactly.
We reduced the librarian position, but there's a specific line with that librarian in it, so it stayed there, so we fixed that.
So you need a motion?
Question, nice question, oh, do we need a motion?
No, go ahead.
If you reduce the librarian, I see where the salary amounts were deducted, but they were added back in on other lines.
Yeah.
Same amount.
I took them out, when I developed the budget that was presented, uh, a while ago by Tom, I took them out of those lines, um, that are at the top of this worksheet, okay? So basically what we're doing is, is we're moving it from where I should have taken it out and put it and replaced it up above.
You're just changing the line items, the amounts have changed.
Changing them, the line items.
Right, the bottom line of the budget stayed the same, just the.
That's not a, I don't understand how that's a reduction in the position though?
The position was reduced from the general staff line, and it should've been reduced from the librarian line. So when he fixed it, he made the librarian line zero and put the funds that he took out of the librarian line back in the staff line, otherwise we would've cut three positions.
What Matt's telling us, Tammy, is it is making the lines more accurate to reflect what actually is.
How much, do you have any lines, do you have any lines that are zeros? In the budget, all together.
We tried to put a dollar in every line.
Thank you, that's, that's, that's what I wanted.
Exactly. However, we're gonna eliminate this position entirely.
No, no, that, that's different.
Right.
Does everybody understand why I say keep it all?
Yes, we should know.
Well, we should, but sometimes, you know, people are new and they first time budgets and.
Jamie, do you know why?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I'm not saying.
No, but we, we raised that issue before.
Right, right, but that's, that's important to publish, I realize, too.
Are any of these Baki items for preschool at Baki and Memorial?
No, no, this is for, um, elementary school.
Just for elementary school?
Yes.
You moved the preschool from Memorial to Baki?
No, I have preschool in both places.
Still in both?
Yes.
So that's something we should discuss, because it might be a good idea to move them all to Baki, because that's where they're really going to be. That's, that's a really good idea.
But it will change the budget.
Doesn't change the budget, it just moves the line.
If I'm understanding correctly, I'm trying to find out that you got the dollar bill i- in one of them to keep the line up?
We'd have, yeah, we'd wanna do that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I would think.
So which line are we talking about here?
Which, which part of you, uh, regular?
Well, the preschool that we're talking, just talking.
Preschool's not on this.
This is the preschool.
This is just two, two pieces, just the librarian and athletics.
Okay.
So Jim, it, probably the best process would be for someone to make a motion in a second and then have a discussion about the budget.
About these movements?
No, not about the movements, you don't have to necessarily vote to approve the movements until you vote to approve the whole thing.
But you wanna, you wanna motion to, uh, allocate all the preschool stuff into the Baki building?
I think the first step would be to make a motion to, uh, adopt the budget and then have the budget discussion and have that within the budget discussion. Is that right?
You wanna doll, yeah, you want a dollar amount or just adopt the budget as presented?
You should, uh, probably do a dollar amount, right, Matt?
Because we don't have that privilege.
You gotta give them that.
Right, yeah. So I'd move that we adopt the superintendent's operate, proposed operating budget, uh, to the board for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one in the amount of thirty-six million, four hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Happy with that number, Pat?
Okay. Second? All in favor?
Nope.
No, in favor of the motion, then we have the discussion.
No.
No, you're right, I gotta refer it. No, you're right, I gotta reverse. Hey, I'm dyslexic folk, okay? You're right, I did it reverse. Pam, hand it out to that forest.
Test it down, Pam.
Okay, there has been a motion and a second. Shall we continue discussion?
So now, would someone like to motion to move the preschool funds to Baki? I would ask that we leave one dollar behind.
Yeah, I move, move that we, um, move the preschool funds in Memorial to Baki, leaving one dollar in the, in the, uh, Memorial account.
Second.
Discussion on that.
So, yeah, I guess I'm a little confused. Because I thought I heard Tom say something different, so let me ask the question. If, if it's going to be in Baki, removing the preschool to Baki, why do we need to still have it in Memorial?
Oh, we, we are, we're moving pre-K three to Baki.
Right.
And the motion is to move the pre-K dollars in programming to Baki, so it's accurately reflected in the budget.
Right.
But like any budget, we should leave a dollar behind just in case something unforeseen happens, because it's, it, once you close it permanently, you can't ever.
There may be a situation with a special child that might need to stay at Memorial. We don't know that.
Rule of thumb is you don't ever wanna leave a line with just a zero in it, because you can't, you can't, that line is closed at that point.
No, no, no appropriation, no spending of the money.
Right.
So there's an appropriation for one dollar, which means we can increase it if necessary. It's an insurance policy.
But I think, where, to, to, to be right up front, there may be a situation next fall where we may need to have a preschool child at Memorial for whatever special.
That's why I call it an insurance policy. Something rears its ugly head, we can spend money if we have to.
It's unusual, it's probably not likely, but that's, this is a what-if kind of scenario, in case something like that happens.
It would be exceptional, but it is always wise to leave a dollar.
You might have two kids that might need to be together for whatever reason. I, I don't know, it just.
If something rears its ugly head, we can spend money, because if you put zero in there, RSA thirty-two, no appropriation, no money. So if you put a zero in that line, if something comes up, we're in trouble.
But only till the next budget, right?
That's correct.
This is the next year's budget, yeah.
Yes, it's only, it's only good for one year. You have to do it every year.
Yeah, okay, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, next year, we should know better, you know, we'll have, we'll have some history. Okay, so, for the discussion. Can we have a vote on this one? Thank you. Opposed? Jamie, I'm sorry, I saw your hands like that, but I didn't see it move, I'm sorry. You were still, still thinking. I, I, I just wanna make sure you're comfortable with, 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 because it looks like you still got some concerns.
No, it just, it just seems. I don't, I guess.
It's municipal budgeting at its worst.
Yeah, it seems like, we, we've made the decision that we're, that it's going to be in Baki, but we're saying, but.
But we don't know what's gonna happen.
You might have a special needs situation that requires that child to stay at Memorial, and you don't know that.
But again, Jamie, the rule of thumb, I, I, I would advise the board as your employee, always leave a dollar in there, you just never know.
Oh, fearless, man.
And what's the vote, Matt? I'm gonna, I'm gonna be irrelevant, I think, anyway, so.
I think it is gonna be irrelevant.
Oh, absolutely.
So are you gonna vote yes, or are you voting no?
Well, what's the term, who's voted?
Everybody voted for you.
Everybody voted for you, you were still, you were still the great winner.
No, I'll agree.
Okay, that's unanimous.
That way I can go back to, to, to number seven and say, I agree with you.
Oh, let's keep the fun going. Okay, any other discussion on the budget? There's always one. Yeah, Jamie, what do you got?
So I've got some slides I'd like to review.
Yep, okay, yep. And you running a slideshow, eh?
I'm getting them, yeah.
Anybody that, um, knows me knows I do slides for the budget. That's what I do.
Like visual aids, it's good.
Here's your first slide.
Sure.
They can't hear you over there.
Is that better? It's missing all the numbers.
Oh.
So there's numbers, when I sent it, there are all the numbers in the bars.
How many slides did you change? All of them were.
There's one.
Let me try your original set, hold on.
I can use that thumb drive, if maybe it's doing something, Google gets it.
Oh, yeah, I will try that, hold on.
It's my Google Docs doesn't handle it, I don't know. I can go plug mine in.
Matt, Matt has it. Pam, do you wanna just have Matt?
He doesn't have the update. Let me, why don't I just plug mine in, and I go right over there and do it?
Here, let me give you the, uh, table.
Is it a long table, or?
It's a good thing you're an Irishman.
Sure. Worth his while, you know?
Way too much light to make.
Okay, so, I had sent a lot of questions in, um, for the first round, so when we went through the first round, a number of those questions that came in were from me. One of them was, I looked at two of the big accounts, health insurance, and I looked at salaries, so I'll talk about those two first. Uh, the, the graphs on the left are simply the historicals, uh, until you get to those last three bars on the right, one is the current budget, one is a proposed operating budget, one is a default budget. The, the graph on the right is percentages, so percentage change from prior year, uh, until you get to the last three bars, and then it's what is the proposal versus twenty, current budget? What is the proposal versus nineteen actuals, and what is the default versus nineteen actuals? I'm a big believer in looking at what our actual spending is. So when I went through the, uh, health insurances, uh, the, and I had discussions with Tom on this, and Matt has given me feedback also, my concern on health insurance was, jeez, it doesn't seem that we're going up with those amounts, uh, presently, and that this would probably be an area for concern. Uh, Tom and Matt, uh, have, uh, pushed back, saying, eh, they may or may not be what we need, but the risks are too high. So, uh, have advised that they would not, uh, recommend any changes. And so, um, I take that in, into account, I understand, I, I do appreciate the work that they've done, so, I'll, I'll basically hold that in, in abeyance right now, and I'll come to my, my summary at the end and, and resolve my conflicts. Salary spend. I asked an awful lot of questions, uh, about salary spending in the, uh, previous presentations, and a lot of my questions centered around, this line item is eight and a half percent increase, and that's not what we said we were gonna get from the contract changes. And this line item is, is seven percent increase, and that's not what we said. So I had many, many questions like that, that I had asked before. Uh, when I broke it down and went back over this holiday weekend and, and, and looked at it this way, it kinda started coming more in descent. So what I was doing when I was looking at the spending initially, I was finding outliers, if you will, things that were outside what I expected to see. What I didn't pick up was outliers in the other direction, which would be reductions and shifts. When I combine all of them together, I see that I'm, in the current budget year, I'm up two and a half percent, and the proposal, I'm up another two point seven percent, which is fairly close to what we had said we expected to have happened, and I'm aware of particular instances of new hires, et cetera, that would impact that. So when I looked at the salary piece, I said, jeez, you know, I, I can, I can, I can, uh, close that circle, I can, I can bridge that gap. I understand this one now better than when I had all those questions. So Matt apologized for having to answer all those separate questions. If I'd done it this way first, uh, I probably could have avoided some of those questions. Uh, FICA, this was an area that, a- again, um, I do have a financial background, so I look at patterns and trends. I saw the increase in FICA greater than the increase in salary percentages. I thought that was odd, because they were correlated. Uh, Matt has reviewed this and has assured me that the FICA calculations are in fact correct. Uh, I trust what Matt is telling me, so I accept that. Um, I'll probably just have to go back to my files and see what I was missing where, um, when I picked that up. Supplies, concern with supplies, uh, I think that we have a higher spending in supplies than we need. Supplies should, in my mind, be tied to student population. Student population is going down, I should see supplies go down. And in fact, we did see supplies go down in eighteen and nineteen. Tom has in fact, uh, highlighted that he did have to put spending freezes in, and perhaps that we are underspent there. I would probably not fully agree with Tom on that. Uh, so supplies to me is an area that I think is, is, is something of an opportunity.
But, but you're not saying that you don't agree that we froze the budget?
No, no, I, correct.
You're saying we need to look at that in the future.
Correct. I, I, I'm saying that I still think that the supplies are too.
I just wanna clarify, because the factual component of the freeze is factual, but the supplies do need to be looked at.
And I, I'm gonna jump in for one second, because my perception, and it is only a perception, is that when you look through the manifest, it looks like they're jamming through every piece of supplies they can spend now, because they're gonna get a freeze down the road.
I would agree.
And I hate that. And so I think, even though you got these in here, and that's probably all right, I really hate when we do that, because it gives credence to the philosophy that you have to spend it all, you never get it back, and that doesn't cut with the voters. Just telling you, my opinion on that.
Thank you. Yeah, Matt, Matt would like to.
Okay, I'm currently working with all the schools, and we're gonna try to plan all the spending for the remainder of the year.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
Proactively instead of.
Right, and that, and it feeds into what Jamie's saying in terms of, we've got declining enrollment, yet, yet our spending goes up. Yeah, we froze for two years, so we missed out on some stuff, but you know, we have a very generous taxpayer community in both Kingston and Newton, and that a lot of parents stepped to the plate and supply a lot of these things that we didn't fund, but the kids still had. You don't see, these kids are not complaining about what they don't have, their parents do. It's, again, my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie, for letting me speak.
No problem. Uh, travel, this is, uh, this is one of my bugaboos. Uh, people on the finance committee hear me talk about travel. We have extensive travel increases. Uh, again, Tom and Matt have, have pushed back, saying that this is something that we can look at, but they're not comfortable with, uh, making adjustments at this point. Travel is an area that I personally believe we need to tighten up on as a financials control perspective. I brought this out in the finance meetings, and I think that is an area that we need to do work on. Clearly, I, I look at the chart and I say, this is an area of opportunity, we should not be spending that much. Again, the feedback from Tom and Matt have been that I should hold off, and that we can look at this, but we should still hold the, the current budget.
Jamie, can I also just add that it's important for the public to know that it's not just, it, it, we can't just say no to travel expenses. We have to pay them contractually at, at the, the, the government rate. What we are going to look at is the amount of travel going on and the way reimbursements are submitted, the timeliness, the forms, who gets what, when, and for. We're gonna tighten it up, but, but I just don't want anyone watching the video later to be confused that there's a contractual obligation for professional, for all, for all of our staff.
And it's, and those are legit expenses.
We think that there will be savings in travel when we reorganize, right, because we're closing a building and people are traveling back and forth. For example, the choral teacher who is here tonight, she travels right now to the middle school and the high school. That will go away, we think. We don't think she'll be at the elementary schools, so we're saying that that's something that we're going to need to look at closely.
Diesel and gas, again, this is, is one that I believe we are heavy on. Uh, Matt has provided me information, uh, basically that traces, tracks, uh, global gas pricing, uh, and, and indicates why he believes that the, the numbers that he has are valid. I still look at this and I still think they're high. Uh, data communications, uh, this is another area that I think that are high. Matt also has informed me on this, that, uh, there are reasons for this, and, and, and some of this is, is, uh, is his Comcast bill, and that includes the tying into the new, uh, SAU offices. Still, to me, it looks high. Information access, another bugaboo of mine. Uh, those look high to me. Tom has pointed out that other line items within technology have been adjusted. One of the things that, that I want to see on information access is usage, so what do people, how, we, we pay for these subscriptions, many, many subscriptions. What is the usage of those subscriptions? And if the usage isn't there for the money that we're spending, then it needs to be reviewed. So information access was another target area of mine. Uh, this has got to do, again, so that, that Tom and the public understand, sick leave payout is a contractual obligation that must be paid. This is simply a question of what the targeted number estimate is of what that will be. And my estimate would be lower than what Tom and Matt are estimating. Now, granted, they've been estimating it longer than I, but again, I'm visual, I look at the charts and I say, it seems to me that we have some, uh, some heftiness here. So what do I do when I get all this put together? When I added up my numbers, from my view, I thought there was about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of savings. Granted, I don't know everything that I think I know, so I said, why don't I cut that in half and say that it's about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of savings here? That takes care of all those things that I think I know that I don't know. Uh, and so I pushed that with, with Tom and Matt, and, um, I will be supporting the budget as submitted. And so you'd say, well, why the hell did you just step us through all this stuff? And the reason is, I, I think it's important to look at these things, I think we need to keep on looking at these things. I do believe there's opportunities in these areas, I will be monitoring these areas. So if I believe all that, why am I gonna support the budget as presented? Because I also believe and trust what Matt and Tom are telling me. They, they have taken a very difficult situation with a reorganization, funding a good deal of it through operating expenses this year, tightening up the budget and bringing things to bear, and, and, and providing clear information and, and, and listening, going back and forth, so, I am willing to support the budget, uh, in support of them, because I think that they have taken on the difficult things, and they're, I can believe when they point out to me that, yes, that's accurate, but this is this other area that you didn't pick up on, that you're not accounting for this part of it. The other thing that builds trust is, when I sent these to Tom, saying I want to focus on these and look at these, he basically politely said, yeah, that, that, we can look at these, and, but, but these really have to stay where they are. But he also said, and we should look at these other items, too. So in my mind, they have built the trust, uh, to support the operating budget, so I will be supporting the operating budget. But I did wanna bring these out. This is what we do need to be doing as, as a board, these are the things that we do need to be looking at, and we do need to be very prudent with our spending, and I do understand that this is a, an unusual year with what's going on, but I, I felt, I felt it necessary to have this review, so thank you for, uh, enduring.
Thank you.
No, thank you, Jeff.
Any further discussion? Okay, so we wanna move the motion?
Move the motion.
Here's a question.
In favor of supporting the superintendent's recommended budget of, make sure I'm right on this, Matt, thirty-six, huh, thirty-six million, four hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. Is that eighty-eight cents I forget you?
Thirty-six million, four hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-eight cents, yes.
That is correct number that I said? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
End of this, I believe, correct? It's a beautiful thing. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Matt, you have a architect's?
No, we have to do the default budget.
Oh, okay, all right. Um, now, if, if I am correct, the default budget is prescribed by law?
It is.
So we have very limited ability there, because they set the formula?
Yes.
We can't really change too much.
Except we had to remove.
We did remove.
We had to remove the ice hockey per Diane Goros', um, advice.
Clarification, we did include it in the proposed, and it just got, it just got voted in favor of the proposed with the hockey in it.
Yes.
So that was one of the clarification items.
But it couldn't go in the default?
It cannot go in the default, because of the way the warrant article was written.
If, the way the petition warrant article was written, it was almost a one-time expense. Am I correct on that, Matt?
All right.
So therefore, it had to come out of the budget by statute.
So if, if our voters are asleep at the switch, and they vote for the default, which is more money than the regular budget, that means we cannot have ice hockey for these kids next year?
Means that we can't give them the ten thousand, five hundred some odd dollars. And, and I have notified the. And I have notified the ice hockey folks. They are doing a separate warrant article to be ready.
Petition warrant article.
Petition warrant article. They didn't write it the right way, and it was tough. We really felt bad. I mean, I didn't hide anything from them.
It is tough. I feel bad. They've worked very hard.
I do, too. They worked really hard, yeah. I called John, and I, you know, Matt talked with John.
Statute's a statute.
No, I get that. I understand that.
To me, the, I mean, this has gone before the voters a number of times. It was, there was clarity in the last one. It was very close and back and forth previously. There was clarity in the last vote. The intention, at least to me, was obvious.
It was.
That this would continue ongoing. It's one of the reasons I asked, is that included in it? Because I wanted to make sure that at least maybe it's included.
And the nice thing is that if the operating budget passes, it's in there forever. It's in there.
Right.
In the future default.
Well, $10,000 is-
What? Correct.
Correct.
So any additional, I think we pay for the ice time, am I correct on that?
They pay for the ice.
Okay, they pay the ice, then we pay the other, okay.
Unlike football.
So either way, they're gonna have to come up with some money every year.
Correct. All right.
This is the amount that they have to approve.
They jab every once in a while. Flipbook gets a big one.
Yep, and with the ice hockey out, the amount is, whoever would like to make a motion, if you could write this down, thirty-six million, six hundred and sixty-three dollars. I'm sorry, thirty-six million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Even?
An eighty-eight cents?
I don't see an eighty-eight cents there. I'm trusting the business manager.
We can't put pennies on this particular form.
You didn't round it up, huh?
Yeah, we had to round.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Do I have a motion on that number?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt or accept the reading of thirty-six million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars as the default budget for 2020.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Enamis? And I need you to sign it, please. So it's gonna be passed around. Thank you very much.
Will they give us money back on this one, too?
We'd like to get any money from the state. Are you kidding me?
The last time our signature was worth forty-eight grand divided by seven.
That would've been nice.
Print for thirty-six million divided by seven.
That'd be sweet.
I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, folks, please make sure that you print, write your position, and then sign it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
One more question. What's the current enrollment?
Just fifty-nine hundred and ninety-seven. I mean, I say sixteen hundred when people ask me.
Dip below the sixteen.
We did. We barely dipped below the sixteen. Oh, Matt has it right here. Oh, we're at fifteen seventy-eight now.
Yeah.
Thank you, Matt.
And declining.
Okay.
No, no.
Oh, yeah, here it is.
This is as of October 1st, though.
Yeah.
Fifteen seventy-eight as of October 1st.
Now, can we go with the architect on the record?
Yeah.
I don't know if you still want all the detail on that, but I did-
All right.
The table back.
Oh. Waiting for Jim.
I have that.
All right, well-
It's magic.
We have asked architects to submit proposals to, for qualifications. We originally received nine different proposals. The facilities committee went through. Each proposal whittled it down to three different-
Vendors.
Yeah, vendors. And this evening during the facilities committee, they approved one architect for the next two years. Jim, do you wanna say anything about it before, or do you want me to just say who it is?
Yeah, I mean, we looked at, we looked at, what, eight altogether?
Nine.
Nine, yeah.
Yeah.
And the last three were very similar in terms of qualifications and expenses. There were just some important things that stuck out that made us decide on this, this one particular vendor. And one of them was cost, but the other was the ability to do the design work and the code analysis and whatever management would be required. And their references, which were extensive, and examples of their work.
Good. The firm selected was Corzilius Metzewitski.
How, okay, how do you spell that, please?
We just call it CMK Architects.
Yeah, but how do you spell it? Is that okay for us?
Not I.
Okay, we'll give it to you tomorrow.
I can imagine Phil is trying to come up with that one.
She can get it tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
I just have to repeat what Jim had said. All the firms that submitted proposals were excellent firms, all of them, okay? The last three were extremely excellent firms. And it was, I was an observer, it was very difficult for the committee to make a choice.
A fair statement. And thank you to all of them for participating and their willingness to provide us the information to allow us to make our ultimate decision.
So do I have a motion for this firm?
I'll move to accept them. Them.
CMK.
They are second.
CM, yeah.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All in favor?
Thank you.
Want to talk about the non-publics we talked about?
Sure, sure. We just wanted to make an announcement that the school board is working actively with Eric Chinberg, a developer, who is interested in developing the seminary. And so we are in active negotiations with Mr. Chinberg regarding the seminary property, and there will be more information coming soon. Alessio, was there anything else that you would like to mention about this?
Well, that's very succinctly put. We should have some more parameters at the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll have more information at the next meeting.
Now, eight-four is seminary negotiations, but I guess you just-
That was it, yeah.
Okay, second public comment. Harold?
Cheryl Gannon from Kingston. Thank you for the report on the seminary.
Yes.
That's all I wanted to know, like, what's going on? I don't need the details, but it's very good to hear that something is going on.
Very exciting.
What a beautiful, beautiful building, and hope that it can be preserved for future generations. I'm gonna take this opportunity, because I won't get it very often, about the hockey. Just reminding that at the deliberative session, I had suggested and offered a motion that we do make it clear to Sanborn Eyes it. I know, you know, those of us who go to the meetings and who have this history kind of understand that, but new people move into the district. They may not understand that. I think it's a good idea to put that in there, just to make it clear, so there is no problem. So I'm glad to hear that it's gonna be resolved for next year. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody. And thank you for your work on the budget. Appreciate it, and we'll debate it again tomorrow and see what happens. Thanks.
I also wanted to just compliment you all on the work on the budget, and especially point out Mr. Fitzpatrick's analysis and his statements, which he said so much better than I do, but I reiterate it. I push back all the time on different budget items, and Matt and Tom and I talk, as Jamie has done on this one. And I find, too, that their answers are thorough and open to looking at the future and open to trying to make sure that we get the very best possible results for the kids, for the dollars that we're spending. And I think the trust level's very high, and I appreciate how you guys have done it, and I appreciate the way that Jamie expressed it. So thank you.
Any others? Okay, so, we need the meeting agenda. I think you've got the thing with Pam, the NSA, New Hampshire School Board Association. We also have those policies. Anyone got anything else? Okay, in that case, we'll go to the announcements. The next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be a joint meeting with the Budget Committee, held on Wednesday, December 18th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the library at the Sanborn Regional High School, 17 Danville Road. Now, having said that, not realizing we were gonna have both, you and I are gonna have to look really good at the agenda.
It's only a joint, only a joint meeting if the Bud, if we need to have a joint meeting. Otherwise, it will be a typical school board meeting, and we'll know more tomorrow night. So what I would say is that we're having a standard school board meeting on the 18th, and if we need to have a resolution or a joint meeting with the BudCon to come to resolution on the budget, then we would, we would announce that.
Okay, all right. That'll be posted on the agenda if it makes sense.
Is it at 7:00 p.m. though?
It's at 6:00.
Did I say?
It says seven years.
Yeah, I said seven and nine, but no. We'll stay with six. All right. That doesn't mean they can't commit at seven, because we'll have business to do.
Right.
So they won't have to change unless they want to. Okay, the school, yeah, the Budget Committee will hold a public hearing on Thursday, January 9th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. in the auditorium of the Sanborn Regional High School. Okay, we now need a motion to go into non-public, and it's right there in number 11.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into the second non-public session per RSA 91-a colon 3, Roman numeral 2.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, we'll take a few minutes, and we'll go on that.